Join my place and sing our Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our January meeting. As we know, it's 5:30, not 5 o'clock start time. I know that will help many of us this year coming from day jobs, so to speak. So, thank you to all in attendance. We have all council members present in the county at four. Glad everybody's here and survived the winter snow. Kudos to all county. And I know city staff as well has been working their tails off to get roads clear. And I know all of us, we're still heavy hearts of everything going on out west and not enough that we can even do here locally. But I know this is for me, prayers and supports. Yeah, we're blessed. I think we're in spring, have a warm home to go home to. Yeah, California and all those affected are in our prayers. And we're going to start by approving our minutes from our December meeting, which was December 5th. Do we have any additions, corrections, or changes to those minutes?
We do.
Ray?
Yeah. I know Ray Denning does twice as much work as I do here, but he's mentioned twice being here and present at that meeting. I was here.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Yes, so in attendance, it does have Ray Denning's name twice. We will give those changed to black.
Now, I will make a motion to accept the minutes and as corrected.
As corrected, all right, reflecting that Ray Black was also present at the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor of approval of December minutes as corrected.
Right.
Yeah. And I'll go ahead and just get a note on here. Shall we go ahead and, can we go ahead?
Just strike it in.
Yes. And, thank good kids. And we'll go ahead and, I'm going to send this round to your side, Dwayne. Thank you. Technically, the next item on the agenda means that I won't have to finish the meeting because we're going to elect a new president and vice president for 2025. So, I won't exit the room, but I won't have to serve in the leadership capacity. I won't have my voices knocked this year. So, we do want to entertain.
I think you're re-nominated.
No. You do not have to re-nominate me, please. But it's been an honor. I've learned a lot and happy to serve, as I know everyone on this table is. Many already have in the past. So, we do want to open for nominations. We'll start with our president or chair. Book words are A-OK or interchangeable. We're going to accept any nominations for president for county council for calendar year 2025.
I would like to nominate Chris Shelton for president.
Chris has served as our vice.
I'll say yeah.
Since this past term, we have a second by Dwayne May. Any questions? I think he's willing. We think so. Yeah, great finding to my expertise. And obviously, it's a great transition having somebody in a vice role, moving them right into the president's role. So, unless we have an additional... I guess we need, let's vote first. I think if we are unanimous and/or majority, then I think we're going to go ahead and move forward that approval. But all those in favor of making Chris Shelton our president for 2025, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign? Chris did not raise a hand. Okay, Chris Shelton is our new president. Now, do you formally need to accept the nomination for vice president and role from here, or do I go ahead and do that? I should probably know that.
You should probably.
Yeah, well, okay. So, we'll let Chris jump right in with, sorry, let me sign this. We'll pass on the minutes or signature. We'll make sure these get over to another side. And we'll let Chris take over with nominations for vice chair.
First of all, we thank everyone for the opportunity to serve as president this year. I took a little bit of a hiatus last year I was president. I think it was 2018, so ready to give it another run. Thank you. With that, I need someone to help cover when I'm not here or in the person for me to lean on and for me to help coach along the way. And I'm sure they'll teach me a few things as well. So, I'll take nominations for vice presidents.
I'd like to nominate Gary Copeland for vice president.
Nomination, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any additional nominations for our close? Here are none. Those in favor, Gary Copeland serving as vice president for 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Gary.
Thank you. Heather, I would like to say thank you for your leadership last year, especially trying to unify us with commissioners and us working better as a unit of government. And I really appreciate that. I thought that was outstanding.
It's a pleasure mine, thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Since you're going to take over, so I was running this meeting, I'm going to pass those down to your way. Now, these are technically the formal printed copies. I know they'll need signatures for our... Send those down to Chris. If you're more listening, let's talk.
All right. The next item on our agenda for this evening is the meeting guidelines for 2025. The... And this will be...
I think the only thing I changed on it is that the meeting start at 5:30.
Perfect. So, that, no changes for 2025. I'll go ahead and read through those. Jersey County Council will adopt the following guidelines for meetings that take place in 2025. The adoption of guidelines. One, sure meetings will hold a uniform format that includes public participation and viewing. Meetings will start at 5:30 p.m. unless otherwise advertised. Meetings will be recorded using an Alamo multi-directional camera. Meeting will be published on Jersey County, Indiana Government YouTube channel. Public comment will be limited to the end of the meeting. Any member of the public who wishes to speak must use the podium and clearly give their name and address. Public comment will be limited to three minutes unless council president grants additional time. To be added to the agenda, please notify the auditor at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Do I have a second on the guidelines or do I have a motion on the guidelines?
You have a motion for approval or changes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed. Next item on the agenda is the highway interlocal agreements.
I just realized I left it on my desk.
I have a copy of it.
I was going to say I have an email.
Yeah.
Oh, I have a copy up here.
Very reasonable. Came up as my very last attachment.
If you want to skip, I'll try to pull it up.
I can pull it up on my phone.
Email to Casha and see if she'll print it for me. I'm the best.
Perfect.
Tenma, I can hand you down my computer. I've got it right here, Chris.
Sure, my computer decided to unlock, maybe. Is that my signal right now? Yeah, if you don't mind.
Of course, those were it.
So, the only change in that interlocal is basically that if Jefferson County buys the piece of equipment, then Jefferson County will then perform maintenance on that piece of equipment. And the same with the equipment that would be purchased by Scott County. And that we will carry insurance on our own equipment and they will carry insurance on their equipment.
Which were, do you remember the numbers that were modified? Let me read the whole ad here.
I...
It's pretty lengthy.
I do not. Jason just had a small clip that he read at the commissioners' meeting when they approved it. And then Pat, of course, has looked over this.
Oh, it's arranged. For the next two hours, I'll read through this one, no problem. Amended interlocal agreement between Jefferson County, Indiana and Scott County, Indiana, regarding funds for purchase of county highway equipment and maintenance. And our local agreement is entered, is entered between Jefferson County, Indiana and Jefferson County, and Scott County, sorry. Whereas Jefferson County and Scott County have authority to enter into agreements pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-2 to exercise jointly any power they may undertake individually and to purchase, sell, and exchange services, supplies, and equipment. And whereas Jefferson County and Scott County acknowledge their mutual interest in the improvement and maintenance of the county roadways within Jefferson County and Scott County and recognize the need for financial cooperation to undertake such improvements using jointly purchased equipment. Whereas that interlocal agreement sets forth the terms and conditions under which the parties agree to provide funds to be used for road improvements and maintenance using equipment purchased for the benefit of both parties. Now therefore, in exchange for the mutual consideration, the receipt of the legal sufficiency of which the parties acknowledge, Jefferson County and Scott County agree as follows. Agreement duration. This agreement shall begin upon the execution of all parties to this agreement and shall last until December 31st, 2025. The parties may extend, modify, or renew this agreement by executing written extensions, modifications, and renewals signed by all parties. Agreement purpose. The purpose of this agreement is to facilitate the maintenance of the county roadways within the jurisdictions of Jefferson County and Scott County. The parties agree to equally bear the cost for the initial purchase of certain chip and seal equipment to be used to maintain by the parties in a manner described below. In prurience of this agreement, the parties agree to the following. Chip and seal equipment shall be used by both Jefferson County and Scott County between May 1st and October 30th of each year that the agreement is in effect. The scheduling of the equipment used will be managed by the county highway superintendents for Jefferson County and Scott County. Each county will be responsible for the maintenance and insurance cost for the equipment that is owned by the county that purchased the equipment. During the off-season, the road maintenance, sorry, during the off-season for road maintenance, the equipment shall be stored in Jefferson County Airgrounds Building. Both counties agree to provide labor and other equipment where practicable and upon the request of the other party to assist in the maintenance and improvement of the county roadways. Both counties will charge FEMA rates for labor and equipment owned by other county when the request for assistance is made to the county highway superintendents. And each of the counties shall retain full ownership interest in the equipment purchased by the county that purchased the equipment. And each county shall retain an option, the first rights of refusal to buy out the other party's interest of a piece of equipment in the event this agreement is canceled, expires, and is not extended. The manner of purchasing. The county shall comply with the Indiana Public Purchase Laws in purchasing the equipment, including any applicable federal laws pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-12. The compliance by the, by the one of the applicable statutes governing public debt constitutes compliance by the other. Partial or complete termination. The parties agree to cooperate in partial or complete termination of this agreement as required by Indiana Code 36-1-7-3 in the event partial or complete termination is necessary and to provide for the respective responsibilities in the event of the same. Delegation of duties. The parties shall agree that due to the nature of the project, that no delegation of authority is required pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-4A3. Fiscal body approval. Pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-7-8, or, sorry, -4-82, this agreement is subject to approval by Jefferson County and Scott County's fiscal bodies. Filing. This agreement will be filed with the Scott County Recorder and the Jersey County Recorder within 60 days of execution will be filed in Indiana Board State of Accounts. Time of essence. Time is of the essence of this agreement. Parties shall make every reasonable effort to expedite the subject matter herein subject to any time limitations described here and acknowledge that the successful performance of this agreement requires their continued cooperation. Number nine, breach. Failure of any part of this agreement to perform the obligations under the agreement shall be deemed to be a breach of agreement. The party claiming such failure shall notify in writing the party alleged to have failed to perform such obligation and shall demand performance. No breach of this agreement shall be found to have occurred in performance as commenced to the reasonable satisfaction of the complaining party within 30 days of the receipt of the notice. If such notice, the breaching party fails to cure the breach, the non-breaching party may seek any remedy available at law or equity, subject however to the compulsory non-biding mediation provided below. Amendment. This amendment and any changes heretofore may be amended only by the mutual consent of the parties and by the execution of such amendment by the parties or their accessors in interest. Indemnification. Each party agrees to indemnify and hold harmless the other party from any claims, damages, or liabilities arising out of or related to the performance of the agreement. No other agreement, except as if otherwise expressly provided herein. This agreement supersedes all prior agreements, negotiations, and discussions relative to the subject matter hereof and is full of integration of the agreement of the parties. Severability. If any provision, covenant, or agreement of or portion of this agreement or its application to any person, entity, or property is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the application or validity of any other provision, covenants, agreements, or portions of this agreement. And to the end of any provisions, covenants, agreements, or portions of this agreement are declared to be severable. Construction and interpretation of the agreement in the law. The agreement shall be constructed in accordance to the laws of the state of Indiana. The parties agree that they and their attorneys have each reviewed this agreement and that the normal rules of construction to the effect that any ambiguities are to be resolved against the drafting party or parties shall not be used in the interpretation of this agreement. Waiver ineffective. No waiver, modification, or amendment of the terms, conditions, or provisions of this agreement shall be valid or have force or effect unless made in writing and signed by all parties. Notices. All notices and requests required pursuant to the Indiana agreement shall be sufficiently made, if delivered, as follows. To Jefferson County, Jefferson County Board of Commissioners, 300 East Main Street, 103, that's Indiana 47250. To County, Scott County Board of Commissioners, 1, East McLean Avenue, number 130, Scottsburg, Indiana, 47170. Or any other address, as the parties may indicate and will in writing to each other by personal delivery, courier, or registered mail, return receipt requested with approved delivery thereof. And the notice, in the event notice delivered by registered mail is refused or otherwise indeliverable, said notice may be delivered by regular mail. Mail notices shall be deemed effective on the third day after mailing. All of the notices shall be effective when delivered. Counterparts. This agreement may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be an original and shall, and all of which shall constitute one of the same agreement. Assignment. The rights and obligations contained in this agreement may not be assigned without the express prior written consent of the parties. No third-party beneficiaries. This agreement shall be deemed to be for the benefit solely of the parties heretofore and shall not be deemed to be for the benefit of any third party. The effective date. Notwithstanding anything herein to the contrary, the agreement shall not be effective until all parties hereunto have executed this agreement. Submission to disagreements and mediation. In the event parties disagree as any material matter, such as, but not limited to, whether a default has occurred, whether substantial completion has occurred, whether one of the parties has a duty to act or a duty to refrain from acting, or whether the ambiguity exists has to the scope and terms of the parties' agreements, the dispute will be submitted to a non-binding mediation under the Indiana rule of alternative dispute resolution. And that's the end.
I wasn't able to get a printed copy so that you could sign her.
Wonderful, thank you.
Don't have to do that again.
So, with that, so I have a motion to adopt the agreements.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the highway interlocal agreement amendment.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Here's, thank you. The next item on the agenda for the following is in regards to the cemetery signage that was mentioned during our December meeting.
Well, although it has some momentum as of right now, I would like to continue my discussion with the cemetery board. I've talked to Alan Manning about it. And we need to iron out some things before we pursue it to higher level, perhaps the commissioners or whatever, and before we reroute it back to the council. And that's really all I've got right now, unless anybody else has anything else to add.
Appreciate you following up on it. It's a good idea. The next item on the agenda is the county operation law. I'm seeing this right as this resolution two, three, and four.
Yeah, I'm calling the meeting guidelines one. Do you want me to read this resolution?
That would be fantastic.
Okay. Resolution 2025-002. Resolution authorizing temporary loan or transfer of fund whereas Jefferson County is experiencing a shortfall in cash flow and funding. And whereas Jefferson County draws not expected to hit, or expects its first tax draw from June 2025, where, until June 2025. Whereas Jefferson County has financial obligations that must be met and the county general fund does not have the adequate funding to pay all of the county obligations until the tax draw is received. And whereas Jefferson County has other sufficient funds on deposit which can be temporarily deposited into the general fund, whereas Jefferson County, which Jefferson County can use to pay its financial obligation. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8-4, the county council hereby authorizes transfer of funds between there. Now therefore, be it resolved that Jefferson County Council hereby authorizes a temporary loan and a transfer of funds in the amount of $1,100,000 the following from designated funds to the county general fund. Said funds are to be repaid by December 31st, 2025. The fund will be Coombe Courthouse in the amount of $500,000. And then I also sourced Lit at $600,000. And my reason for doing that is a few years ago, we did cut back the amount that was going into Coombe Courthouse. So, it is still a healthy fund at this point, but I wouldn't want to put any more stress on it. And Lit does have the sufficient funds to do that. And all which will be resolved the 14th day of January 2025. 2025.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-002 for the temporary funding of county general.
Make that motion.
I'll second. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed, thank you.
Okay, Resolution 2025-003. Resolution authorizing temporary loan transfer of funds whereas Jefferson County is experiencing shortfall in cash flow and funding. And whereas Jefferson County draws not expect its first tax draw until June of 2025. And whereas Jefferson County has financial obligation must be met, the motor vehicle highway fund does not have adequate funding to pay for all of the county obligations until the tax draw is received. And whereas Jefferson County has other sufficient funds on deposit which can temporarily be deposited into the motor vehicle highway fund which Jefferson County can use to pay its financial obligation. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8-4, the county council hereby authorizes the transfer of money between funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that Jefferson County Council hereby authorizes the temporary loan and transfer of funds in the amount of $300,000 the following, from the following designated funds to the motor vehicle highway fund. The said funds are to be repaid by December 31st, 2025. The fund is 7303, which is casino revenue that is used for road repair in the amount of $300,000.
Thank you for reading that. So, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-003 for the $300,000 to cover the shortfall.
I'll make that motion. For Resolution 1.5-003 for $300,000.
I'll second, Dan.
Thank you. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
And one last resolution. Resolution 2025-004. Resolution authorizing temporary loan transfer of funds whereas Jefferson County is experiencing a shortfall in cash flow and funding. And whereas Jefferson County draw not expect its first tax draw until June 2025. And whereas Jefferson County has a financial obligation that must be met and the reassessment fund does not have the adequate funding to pay all of county obligations until the tax draw is received. Nor is Jefferson County has other sufficient funds on deposit which can be temporarily deposited into the reassessment fund which Jefferson County can use to pay its financial obligations. And whereas pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8-4, the county council hereby authorizes the transfer of money between funds. Now therefore, be resolved that Jefferson County Council hereby authorizes a temporary loan and a transfer of funds in the amount of $25,000 the following, the following from the following designated funds to the reassessment fund. Said funds are to be repaid by December 31st, 2025. And it's Coombe Courthouse, $25,000.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-004, $25,000 from Fund 1140 in Coombe Courthouse.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-004 for $25,000 for the tax draw.
I can second that.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. And the funds operate permanently. Next is the appointment discussion.
I do have a list from previous minutes of the current appointments that were given, if you would like that, Chris.
Yes, please. We'll go through the current board appointments that were put into place for 2024. I believe these were all one year. So the first one up is the community corrections, right here currently serving on that, would you like to continue in that capacity?
Sure.
Thank you. Public defender, Heather, would you like to continue in that capacity or?
Yes, I would only, I know my permit from this council is one year, but technically my term on the PD board is not expired, so be curious if I could sit down another year to be able to finish up that term.
Wonderful.
That's myself, Rob Barlow, and Bobby Little is on the board.
Perfect, thank you. Next is Visit Madison, Gary's currently serving on that, would you like to continue or? I would be open to doing something new or whatever, forward to, in favor. When do they meet? When does the Visit Madison Board meet? Usually on Mondays at 4:00 PM, usually the third Monday of the month when you want to. Anybody else have an interest in that board or?
Gary and I talked about it, I mean, I can, I can do it if, if somebody wanted to change up a board that they're sitting on just to have some.
I'd be open to do something different. Okay.
Some different representation on boards, kind of discuss that.
Yeah, so you'd like to serve on Visit Madison?
Only if there was some changing up, you know, I just didn't want to.
We'll leave, we'll leave that one open and come back to it. I mean, I enjoyed my, my time there, but Pam would do a good, good service to it as well, I believe. Agreed. Next up is the insurance board, I've been serving on that for the past year, more than welcome, I'm more than glad to stay on it, or if somebody would like to change a face, usually meet lots a month in the afternoon, or actually in the morning, just before noon. I'll continue to serve for the insurance.
I have a little conflict of interest there on occasion with some information, so I should not.
Southeast Regional Plan Commission.
Nice time, Judy on there is an appointment, is she, who is that, or you're doing?
Ray, check that out, Judy.
Ray, is that something you'd like to continue with?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. EMA, Dwayne.
I would like to continue with that, but I'm a little concerned about the rules on that. I was under the understanding that only the president could serve on that.
That's true, it is true.
But couldn't, couldn't there be an appointment? I, I, that's kind of vague how.
I served on it as, as the president and then I switched, I switched and created that off.
And their meetings were inconsistent this past year and partly just lack of quorum and there were a few different reasons, but yeah, I, with a lot of research on my end too, it was deemed, it was supposed to be the council president and then there were some sources that said that it could be an appointee and/or a second council member as long as the council president was still listed as a member, so, and that actually came from Bob Courtney, so I do think that's probably something we need to verify.
I'd like to stay on it if I could be an appointee, but if it's going to be an issue, I could go with the, what Gary, what was it, to Visit Madison? Was that where you were?
Yeah, I mean.
So, you know, I, I would, I would like to as long as that doesn't cause any procedural, procedural issues.
If it's, if it's deemed the president has to serve on that, you take Gary's spot or the insurance.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll just hold the insurance for now and then, until we get a solution.
And I know Matt Truditz and I do do the poll asking the current members, an ideal meeting day and time to find a little more consistency and hopefully improve attendance. And I actually let, I did not fill out on purpose because I knew I would not be serving on, on that committee this next year, so I'll be honest, I don't know if a decision was made of day and time, just help me out there, I don't think he made a decision, but.
I don't know who he would even contact, who would be able to say yes and appointee.
Is that we get?
Bylaws, they'll be in the bylaws.
So Dwayne, at this point I'll, I'll leave you in that spot.
Okay.
Ray, you're currently serving on 911, would you like to continue, sir?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
And refresh my memory, was it 911, not the EMA board, the 911 board, they just found the clarification in their bylaws, 51% of the members on that board have to actually be law enforcement. And so I think they were trying to pull in, they also were struggling with attendance, so I think they were working to pull in more officers from each of the agencies to improve attendance on that board to kind of get, get that back up, I think, and running consistently.
If I get to a point where I need to step back, I will.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we still would want a council represent, representation on that board, yeah, I thought, I couldn't remember if it was EMA or 911, I think it's 911. Now it has to be 51% law enforcement on the board too.
Good point. Plan Commission, are you, are you still okay with that one?
No, I can still do that.
Thank you. And last but not least, southeastern Indiana soil and water.
That means, yeah, that's fine. It means it's out of town.
I know Ray and I each had, I know there was one board that he was aware of that needed an additional representation, recommendation from this board and then one additional that Dave is currently serving. The council representation for JCBT, not VMI, but Jefferson County Water Tourism, our appointed community member has been Wendy Lawson, her term just, her four-year term just ended December of 2024, so we do need to appoint a new community member, does not have to be one of us, but it can certainly be a community member. And I know I have reached out to some of you with suggested name, who does work in the tourism industry and someone who is very willing and eager to serve. So I, I would like to make that recommendation that Josh Abbott serve and be appointed on JCBT as our council representative. I know the commissioners also have an additional recommendation, I think they're working on as well, and then they have a second seat from an actual commissioner, but unless there are other recommendations from this group.
I think that's an excellent choice.
Yeah.
He said current managers may be out at Fairfield.
And on the second one, I believe that we also have an appointment for the Economic Development Board, and I would like to recommend or nominate Mike Estes for that position.
All right, what's that, what, sorry, what was in the?
Josh.
Josh, what position was it?
For JCBT, the council representative on JCBT.
Sorry, didn't remember my acronym though. All right. Any bring up or vote, so from JCBT Board, Josh Abbott.
I can make that, we need a formal recommendation, you can list my name for that.
Okay, so Heather, and have a second for Josh.
Second.
I don't know, motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulating Josh, he, I know he does a fantastic job down at Fairfield. He's hosted several events that I've been involved with, so that'll be a good pick. On Economic Development Board, Mike Estes, I have a formal motion.
I'll make that motion.
Right, second it. Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. All right, let's get past the ordinance.
So, or you don't, or is that the EMA?
Yeah.
Don't worry about it right now, keep it, you know, we get started.
No, I did, I don't think this was one. My term ended on the Purdue Extension Board, but I'm, I'm going to verify this, I'm 90% sure, I don't think it was a formal council appointee. They came to me asking that I would, a good board member, I was able to serve, serve a term, but not, not seeking to be reappointed there just for some significant conflicts with meetings for that board, so I know they worked to find another board member, but I'll verify, I don't think that's a council appointed board.
I don't know.
Many of us serve on lots of other boards and committees in that community, but I'll, I'll verify that to make sure, but I don't think that's council appointed. So I'll let everybody know that that's the board I'm meeting and we can.
Very good, thank you all for serving on the boards and, no, maybe it consumes some time, this is most appreciated. Chris, are you on two right now? Are you serving on two boards?
Currently on one.
Okay, all right.
So I would, I'll go onto the EMA as the council president, but if we can have the two, the two positions, I don't have any issues with that, just kind of stay in that position.
So salary.
Nobody to go over that. So salary ordinance, we originally presented it in December just to get payroll going, everything, of course, after the first payroll, we were able to find a few little glitches here and there, which Brittany has cleared up, and then also the change in reallocation of money for myself, my office, and then for Tabitha's office as well is included in that. And then, yes, the sheriff's department, we included the new longevity and a blurb about the sign-on bonus, because if that, any payment that has to go out has to be on the salary ordinance, so I don't know that we have followed that. We have been reviewed on that before, so we are trying to make it as specific as possible on every avenue, and we've also included a blurb about sometimes they are paid out and it might exceed the amount that is on the salary ordinance, so. All that is included.
Thank you for taking the time to dot i's and cross t's on this, it's, I know it's always interesting, the first payroll session after the new year.
Yes. There's always someone that thought they were a 35-hour a week employee and really they were a 40-hour a week or something of that nature. The time, the time clock system that we have, we are continuing to work on implementing has really taught us to look at every possible scenario now.
Yeah, good compliance.
Yes.
For the majority of departments.
So, right now, we have our test group up and going on clocking and that is basically everyone, clerk's office and auditor's office, treasurer's office, recorder's office, commissioner's office, and assessor's office. And of course, it was, that was probably going to be the one area that is the biggest change because we have never had to use a time clock before, so we were supposed to go live and use the data to actually produce our paychecks the last time and then the snow hit, so it seems like we've had little snags along the way, so they've been clocking for about a month collecting the data and it's been working really well so far. We just have not been able to use the data yet because we haven't had a payroll that hasn't been associated with Christmas or a snow day or something like that yet. So I anticipate this next time, it should be a seamless process.
Great.
There's a lot of learning and then we'll move on to the next area. There is some compliance being questioned in other areas, so I have been in communication with State Board of Accounts, so we'll probably just move on to another area that is ready for it, and there's several departments excited and ready. This. I'm not lying.
Excited about it.
Okay, let me, let me kick. War is. War is excited.
No, I think it's a great thing, the accountability is absolutely key.
There is rumor that there is another department that is seeking having their own handbook made to avoid using the time clock. So that is what I discussed with State Board of Accounts and the affiliation with courts draws a funny line of what they have to do.
Does that seem to be a trend across the state, that the State Board of Accounts don't do that, or is it just our county that's?
So when we reached out to, through HR, there's a HR group and nearly every county is involved, most counties, whole court system and prosecutor's office and community corrections all use time clocks. So. Yeah. So I, I don't know, State Board of Accounts legal, the Judges Association legal team have been in communication about this, so.
Yeah. I think, I think it's, I think it's a good thing, I think the amount of accountability it brings forward and documentation is fantastic.
I think the biggest thing is that people need to realize, not only does it protect the county, but it protects the employee. If you are someone that is working 10 or 15 hours over every week and not receiving credit for that, this makes everyone accountable to, and it's a federal labor law to not be paying your employees according.
Agreed. So how much of this do we have to, we have to read through line by line?
You don't have to read it.
So the?
Because I read originally, then because it was advertised on the state website, that is the one ordinance that we do not have to read.
So everybody's had a chance to look at this in their emails. We have to read adopt it with the changes?
Correct.
So we will need a motion to adopt the revised 2025 salary ordinance.
Make your motion.
Your motion is second.
I'm happy to make that second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 2025 salary ordinance has been accepted. I marked it. A typo.
Okay. It's never ending on a document.
There's a lot of lines. All right. We are nearing the end of our agenda for this evening, so we are to the point for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before the council this evening?
I just needed to drop off the commentary report. That's all I have.
Want to tell us about it while you're here? That'd be great. Hand it out, we can look at it.
It just goes month by month from the last time that I submitted one, and it just breaks down line by line any debit or credit that goes in or out of the account, so pretty self-explanatory.
Survived the snow?
What's that?
You survived the snow?
I did.
I heard you were in a big truck.
What's that?
I heard you were out in a big truck pushing snow.
Yeah, they recruited me. Kept me busy.
You don't need sleep, you get kids.
Right? I did find a guy, he was an elderly man on Interstate Block Road, had fallen and was laying in the snow for over an hour, and he heard the plow and the truck.
Oh, man.
Dragging across the road and he started screaming for help, luckily I had the window cracked a little bit and I hurried him, but he'd been laying there for about an hour and 15 minutes with soaking wet covered. But he'd been laying there for about an hour and fifteen minutes, was soaking wet, covered in snow.
Scary.
Crossed by, or do you know?
They took him, yeah, he was treated at the hospital. Yep. So I know he called me, he called me two days later and was very, left me a real long voicemail about appreciation, so.
Thank you very much, Chris.
Yeah, yes.
I'm glad you got good hearing over that plow.
I don't have good hearing, that's just it, I don't know how I heard it.
That's awesome, that's fascinating.
Do you have any questions with that, Chris, are you good?
I don't have any, anyone else on the council, any questions?
Oh, about the commentary report? I'm looking.
You're fun.
I do always ask, because I'm nosy, on the NRT, the nicotine, some of the things they're still doing. They can't do the gum, I know, because you can't do the gum. But yours still in patches, is that there?
They're doing, yeah, they're.
Little pouch?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right, perfect.
Couldn't split it out there, yeah. No, we went away from the pins, the vapes, whatever you want to call them, because they were remanufacturing those to be like little soldering irons, melting holes in the jail security glass down at the old jail.
They're smart when we want to be.
Those are, that's our head count.
One seventy. That was as of about twenty minutes before I left to come over here, so. Doing too bad, we took nine, nine up to DOC yesterday, so.
Good, good. You know personally, how many you have?
I'd say fifties, probably in the fifties.
Are we getting? Yeah, we making sure we're tracking every day that they're there, so we're getting.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's what I was trying to ask.
Every, every month, we do a report and it gets submitted to the state. Now, the report is several months behind, because that's how they bill at the state. But we do state billing, and then it all gets submitted back into County General.
They did the lump sum payments, right? From the state, based upon your?
The average.
Average usage. We probably should go back to twenty fours, now that we have our final numbers for twenty-four, make sure we didn't get shorted by the state.
And I know the ISA is also looking at increasing those numbers. We've pushed back quite a bit, because the average daily expenditure for the inmate is actually lower than what the state is. So the state says it's X number of dollars, which is more than what they give us. So a lot of the sheriff's departments have moderately pushed back and said, well, if you don't increase this daily per diem, per inmate, then we're going to kick all of our parole holes out, and then you guys can figure out what you're into of them. Which sheriffs can do that legally, but it's kind of, it's kind of a double-edged sword, because it also cuts your throat with IDOC a little bit too, and parole. So, but I think it's going to get changed in legislation this year. I think they will increase it.
That's good.
Have you been able to use your conference room for much education?
Mm-hmm.
Have you? Good.
We hosted the, actually the Indiana Sheriff's Association Legislative Roundtable. We've done Bethany Circle, used it a couple of times for training. We've hosted several SIG Armors courses that were opened up statewide.
We have the county's open door, which we have folks from schools, other municipalities, council representative, or county, council representative. John Blank, the gentleman who came down. I'm a part of the state to run that training, but we utilized the room for that, that was great.
So yes, it has been being used repeatedly, so it's nice to have.
I want to say thank you to, I know you understand, I know you didn't do it for PR. I think it was great PR, it was the right thing to do, and that's why you did it. Just the pizza, and it just the little extra touch, the holidays, you know, obviously. It's not where most folks want to play their holidays.
Yeah, that was something that we had planned a couple of weeks prior to that, because of, obviously, there's like Papa John's, they were down a pizza oven, so they couldn't do it, because they said there was no way that they could produce that amount of pizza and that shorted, you know, span to get them all done around the same time, so some weren't hot, some weren't cold, so. But yeah, it was, it was nice, it was appreciated well on the inside, so. Yep.
If you would, any detainees from other counties?
We have two, I think, but it's because they have issues with the other county, whether their court system or their housing, and someone else, co-defendants that can't be held together, they don't want them in the same facility together, or something of that nature, so. But no, other than that, which is ours.
If you could, your person attracts the DOC holds, I'd love to see the total number of days we had in twenty-four to go back and calculate against what they paid us for twenty-four.
Okay.
Because I feel, I feel like there's probably a shortfall there.
Yeah. We just take all the, I mean, we keep copies of all those monthly, so we just tally them all our, follow.
That'd be great.
Shouldn't be that hard near at all.
Great.
We had a legislative conference, and one of the things they said that the counties can start doing to get more revenue, one of them was that the state sometimes is shorting the county on the inmates that they hold for them. I think, if I remember right, it was like thirty-five dollars a day, but they're supposed to be paying seventy, and they're only paying thirty-five or something like that. So if that could be pursued, that might be.
Yeah, that's what he was talking, yeah. Well, that's, you know, we're trying to push the ISA, Indiana Sheriff's Association, we're trying to push that up a little bit, so. Hopefully, we are successful. I just found out the other day, I got appointed to the Board of Directors for that, for the ISA, so I should be able to have a little more insight track on that, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah.
Appreciate everything that you and your staff are doing for the county. I know it's a thankless job, and you don't hear a lot of that, but we do appreciate it.
Keeps us busy, but we enjoy doing it, so. If you guys need anything, just let me know.
Appreciate it. Any other comment from the audience this evening?
Sorry. I'm sure Shepherd and Shelter, y'all don't know me. I just wanted to thank you all for the support last year. You know, I'm hoping to continue support this year. On Friday, we're going to meet with the architects. They've already started preliminary drawing for a new shelter. So just trying to get that out there too. Just basically wanted to thank you all for everything you've done for us.
Thank you for.
Thank you, yeah.
Definitely looking forward to the concepts on the new shelter, because I think once we have actual plans and drawings, that's something people can see and they can buy into that this is coming, and we can get the additional support needed to get it built. Thank you all for helping.
So I got an update on the Ready Two project for the campground. Basically, so you know, it still needs to be formally approved, I can renew that, but they're looking at sometime between March to May, when they will have spent Ready One funding to the level sufficient, when they can release Ready Two. So sometime, and that'll be okay. Well, we're starting to put together a request for qualifications for someone to operate it, and then we're starting to put together a request for proposal for the construction of it. So we can get those things going, we may stall a little bit before we get them out, but the timing will work pretty well. But it looks like sometime in that period, we'll have funding available and be able to get some things going.
That'll be great, I know everyone I've talked to here locally, and some people I've talked to from, you know, areas outside of here, they're excited about it. They've either been to Kruger Lake for maybe the hydroplane races, or just, you know, go fishing, and they were excited to hear that there'd be a campground out there and someplace that they could go, because as we know, Clifton and Harvey Lake and the city RV parks are full through the summer, so. That'd be great. Definitely excited about this one.
All right, David.
That's all I have. Thank you. And one thing I want to touch on from the last meeting, we'll get the, we'll get the letter together for the Widen N sixty-two and get all the city, county signatures on that and get that off to the State House, off to their state representatives, and push for that, because I think that's the, really, the future of Jersey County, is having that connector. I mean, if you, I'm sure everybody's been by River Ridge at some point, but if you've ever driven back through River Ridge, it is just unbelievable how it's filling up. You know, the meadow down there is massive, and that construction goes on, I think, for another year and a half, two years. And there's, you know, there's more and more stuff going up every day. People are going to need places to live, and let's face it, Jersey County's a great place to live, low cost. And, you know, it allows us to grow as a community and have more of the amenities that we want in our city, in our county, so looking forward to that for that future growth.
I mean, we have this infrastructure master plan kind of going, and that's one of the areas, so that'll kind of help, I think, timing-wise, to have a plan in place, because there's going to be funding needed. Part of that discussion is also going to be with developers, and see what kind of things they would need or looking for in a place to start developing. It is, you look at New Washington, because that would be the next stop, you just don't see a lot of movement there, so your muscles will strike while the iron is hot.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, I have friends that live down in the area, in Park County, Floyd County, Jersey County, Kentucky. I mean, housing costs are through the roof and scarce, so we're the natural migration point.
Scarcity though, too.
It is, great opportunity.
Just got more calls today, man, needs more rentals.
Absolutely.
Pay attention to your house bills that are going through right now. There's a couple of house bills going through where they're really considering one trustee per county, that's back up, so you might want to contact Alex and talk to him about that. They're also on the, I wish Ben was still in here, but on the legislative, or the law side, they're also considering a bill where they're, a person that's been arrested for multiple and charged with multiple offenses, they're considering taking the highest offense and dropping all the other offenses, and taking that highest offense and just charging the criminal or the, you know, the person that's being charged, just to, you know, it's just, has to do with people incarcerated. You know, trying, it's the size of, I think jail population is what it is.
Sure, so much for that case.
Yeah, yeah, and so that one, he's also working on, I think he's actually in charge of that one, working on that one. So you might want to get in touch with Alex and talk to him about those. And also, another house bill's going through where that party affiliation and where you're running for public office, you know, and how many times you voted in a previous primary, that's also up heard.
So, can you change that?
Looking to change that again, so just a lot of things going through right now, so just for you to be aware. So you might want to give a call to Alex and talk to some of those topics.
Absolutely. Any other items for this evening? Hearing that, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn, right?
Tell them.
Second.
I hope you're united, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.